Commission meeting for June 7th will come to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham. Commissioner Galt.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight, John Perkins has agreed to do our invocation. And Commissioner Galt, if you'll do the pledge of allegiance, please. Everybody rise.
You'll pray with me? Oh, Holy Father, I pray that you'll watch over this meeting tonight. I pray that you'll give us wisdom and give us speed and accuracy in what we do and say. I pray that we'll treat others right and that you'll be glorified in all that we do. In Jesus' holy name we pray, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Galt, I believe you have the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes from May 24th, 2016, city commission meeting be waived and the minutes of said meeting prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second, city clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Before we go on to our appointments tonight, I have a couple of people here that I would like to bring up to the podium. Michelle Campbell and Chuck Tate. Thank you all for being here tonight. Chuck Tate is the new general manager at the Convention Center and Michelle is the marketing director. So, would you all like to say a few things? First of all, I just want to thank you. You're going to be great at the Convention Center. You're a good team. I know you've got lots of energy and ideas and that's what we need there.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and we appreciate you reaching out and asking us to be a part of this. We are thrilled to be at the Convention Center and just excited to be a community partner with the city and county. And I've already met with several department heads and they've been very, very gracious and helpful already. So, I look forward to just, you know, working with them in the future and just being a big part of this community. So, we're thrilled to be a part of it.
I know you've been busy already.
Been very, very busy. Had a wonderful meeting with Ms. Schrader and her staff at the AQAS and, like I said, met with several department heads, city manager, and just a lot of meetings so far. In fact, when Michelle and I were talking, it's hard to get work done, so many meetings. I don't know how you guys do it, but it's going great. The Carson Center left us in wonderful hands. They did a fantastic job. We're in a really good position to hit the ground running and take it to the next level. So, thrilled to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Anything we can do to help would be, our doors are open, so combine see us.
We'll be over there Friday in the pavilion.
I don't, what? Just kidding. Wait a minute, what are you talking about? No, I'm just kidding. Yes, no, I'll see you there, actually.
Okay.
I'm excited to see some fantastic activity taking place at the pavilion and it's such a beautiful space. I'd never seen it empty and I went a couple of weeks ago. It's unbelievable. We have a wonderful asset in the dome and I think that we're going to see a lot of activity in the next few years there. We've got a great game plan moving forward.
Good place to kick a soccer ball.
Super place to kick a soccer ball. I don't know how to kick a soccer ball, but somebody does, I'm sure.
Were you part of Paducah Improv?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought.
But...
He's a comedian.
Well, you know, we're just happy to be a part of it and so, anything we can do to...
Good sense of humor does a lot for you.
I hope so, gosh, I hope so. But, we appreciate you reaching out to us. It means a lot. So, like I said, we're just happy to be there.
Michelle?
Chuck did a great job. I'm excited to be there. We have a lot of good stuff in the works.
Good.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you commissioners. Thank you very much.
So, we'll go on to our appointments. Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve of the act...
What? Sorry.
What did we do wrong?
Well, you have to read the first part of the appointment.
Sorry, Mayor, I mean to get ahead of you.
That's why we have Tammy here.
That's right. You're just helping our earners out.
Thank you.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners and jointly with McCracken County Judge Executive, I hereby appoint Justin Hancock as a member of the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency to replace Basil Drosas whose term has expired. Furthermore, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Deborah Shimwell Stone as a member of the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency to replace Bill O'Brien whose term has expired. These terms will expire June 30th, 2020.
Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve acts of Mayor Kayler and the joint appointment of Justin Hancock and the appointment of Deborah Shimwell Stone as members of the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency.
Second, city clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Keith Petraeus and Paul King as members of the Historic and Architectural Review Commission. These terms will expire June 4th, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Keith Petraeus and Paul King as members of the Historical and Architectural Review Commission.
Second?
City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. And once again, I'd like to thank all the people here tonight that we've approved, that serve on our boards in Paducah. Our boards are a very important part of Paducah and the things that we are able to accomplish as a community. We'll go on to our motion. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Commissioner Deeds, 1209 Salem Street, 341 Hayes Avenue, 1908 Clay Street, 1519 Park Avenue, 1417 Burnett Street, 1931 Hendricks Street, 1429 Park Avenue. Termination of lease with Western Kentucky Union Labor Senior Citizens Housing Corporation for real property located at the Jackson House Apartments and W.B. Sanders Retirement Center. Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for April 2016. City of Paducah Financial Report for period ending March 31st, 2016. Bids for planning department sale of 1904 and 1906 Clay Street. Latrea Hensley, sale of 1001 and 1009 Harrison Street. W. David Denton and David Jones, sale of 1418 Walter Juton Boulevard. John Biles and Roger Kendall.
City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Municipal orders, Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that municipal order entitled, municipal order accepting the bid of Latrea Hensley in the amount of $1 for each piece of real property located in 1904 and 1906 Clay Street and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to complete the sale be adopted.
Second? Hi, Steve.
Hello, good evening. This is the first of several sales this evening. Ms. Hensley was the only bidder on this property and she proposes on making quite a substantial investment on Clay Street. So, we're happy to get this bid.
So, what she has planned meets all the ordinances in that area, obviously.
Right. We have an existing ordinance for modular homes when they're moved into the city. There's a variety of things they have to do, from roof pitch to design scale. They also have to meet in appraised value within a certain houses, within a certain radius of the proposed house that she's putting in there. So, she'll have to meet all those requirements before it's put in.
Okay. City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the bid of W. David Denton in the amount of $5,100 for each parcel of real property located at 1001 and 1009 Harrison Street and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to complete the sale be adopted.
Second?
Steve?
Yes, we received two bids for this property. One by Mr. Denton for $5,100 for each lot. He's proposing to spend approximately $138,000 for an artist dwelling. Not sure how many dwellings at this time. The zoning regulations will limit the actual number he can put in there, whether it's two or three of that number, I'm not quite sure at this point. The second one was from Mr. David Jones, which is proposing $1,000 for each lot. He wanted to do a community garden and also landscape and have some type of sculpture
Okay. City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the bid of Roger Kendall for $1 to purchase real property located at 1418 Walter Juton Boulevard and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to complete the sale be adopted.
Second?
On this property, we also received two bids. One was for a garden and the other was for to construct a new home for his daughter and that was by the adjacent property owner. That proposed reinvestment is approximately $60,000.
And I definitely think anytime we can get something built on a property, we're much better off as a city. So, I'm glad to see that, Steve.
Absolutely.
City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
Before I read, I just, when you talked to David Jones about, how many properties does this city have that are unsold?
Typically, since this is a sealed bid process, we don't contact the property owners that actually submitted until after decisions made by the commission. But certainly tomorrow morning, I'll be calling Mr. Jones, sitting down with him and talking to him about the other surplus properties that we have in the city. So, maybe he can use one of those lots to fulfill his needs.
Great, thank you. Okay, sorry, Mayor. Okay, I move that a municipal order entitled, municipal order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving the subordination agreement between the City of Paducah and the Paducah Bank and Trust Company regarding the property located at 1611 Madison Street, Paducah, Kentucky, be adopted.
Okay, any discussion on this?
I'll be happy to answer any questions. That property's being constructed right now. He's doing a great job. So, we see the reinvestment. Staff has no problem with the subordination.
That's one we went by when we toured.
Yes, on Madison Street. At that time, they were probably standing up there constructing. I mean, they're out there every day working hard, so.
Ready for me, Cole? Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go on to our ordinances for adoption. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to pay clean earth ink for the disposal of household hazardous waste and electronic waste collected during the City-County Free Cleanup Day. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the finance director is hereby authorized to pay clean earth ink the amount of $42,057.70 for the disposal of household hazardous waste and electronic waste collected during the City-County Free Cleanup Day.
City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting matching grant funds through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for 2016 Household Hazardous Waste Grant for funding the annual City-County Cleanup Day, ratifying the mayor's execution of the grant agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with McCracken County. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts matching grant funds in the amount of $25,500 through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for 2017 Household Hazardous Waste Grant to fund disposal services for the 2017 Annual City-County Free Cleanup Day and an educational outreach program. A local match of $12,750 is required with the City of Paducah and County of McCracken contributing $6,375 each through cash and/or in-kind contributions. The city ratifies the mayor's execution of the grant agreement with the state. Further, the mayor is authorized to execute an interlocal agreement with the county for the city to act as the legal recipient of the grant award.
Second?
City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a lease with Jim Smith Contracting LLC for the use of attractive land for the benefit of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city commissioner hereby authorizes and approves the City of Paducah to enter into a lease agreement with Jim Smith Contracting LLC for the use of attractive land that accommodates the Farmers Market Pavilion, the downtown restrooms, and serves as a parking lot for many downtown activities. Further, the mayor is authorized to execute said agreement.
City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 38 of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby repeals Section 38-31, 38-32, and 38-33 of Chapter 38 Emergency Services due to the city's termination of the interlocal cooperation agreement with McCracken County for joint E-91 Emergency Communication Services.
City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing a 911 Communications Services Department as a department of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the city is amending sections in Chapter 2 Administration to create the 911 Communications Services Department and establishing duties and fees for services. Fees for services are set as follows. All telephone companies providing landline services to residents of the City of Paducah shall collect from each line the sum of $2.50 per month beginning July 1st, 2016. In the interim, all telephone companies providing service to residents of the City of Paducah shall continue to collect from each line the sum of $1.50 per month.
Second?
City manager, you want to speak on this?
I want to mention a couple of things. Again, this city department is being formed in lieu of continuation of an interlocal agreement that had been in place between the city and county for a number of years and actually by date expired over a couple of years ago. We weren't able to get together on a negotiation of a new interlocal agreement and with the county's interest in pursuing other options, that leaves the city really with the only option of forming a department to continue the services locally. I want to mention that in the last week or 10 days, that we have been efforting additional parties taking services from the city through this city department and have submitted formal proposals to McCracken County, each of the five rural fire departments and also Mercy Medical Centers. So, we are trying to retain the existing user base and beyond that, in fact, expand upon it, which is what the inclusion of Mercy Medical would be. We historically have responded to, or the interlocal 911, somewhere around 85,000 calls a year. If we're successful in the effort to bring Mercy onboard, that would add about 15% to the call volume. We anticipate that we would be able to handle that additional call volume with current resources, meaning that essentially that 15% additional call volume would allow us to run a more efficient operation than we would without it. So, we are in discussions. Those contracts are under review by the respective parties that they've been submitted to and we think that we took a very thoughtful approach to those, a long-term approach that is intended to, I think, maximize the benefits to residents of Paducah and McCracken County for emergency services communications well into the future.
Any comments? City clerk.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go on to our ordinances introduction so we don't vote on these tonight. Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the finance director to make payment to advanced fire and rescue equipment for the purchase of rescue equipment to be used by the Paducah Fire Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes and directs the finance director to make payment in the amount of $27,745 to advanced fire and rescue equipment for the purchase of rescue equipment listed below to be used by the Paducah Fire Department. A Genesis E-Force cutter at $9,795, Genesis E-Force spreader at $9,250, Genesis E-Force battery, two of them at 160-piece for a grand total of $320, Genesis E-Force RAM $74.95, and a Genesis E-Pak at $885.
Second? My chief.
Good evening. This ordinance that you have in front of you is merely for the expenditure of over $20,000. All of these items are separate and individual pieces of equipment and in order to expend over $20,000, we need an ordinance to do so.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Tyler Technologies for the license of software and the procurement of related products and services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance approves the execution of a software-as-a-service agreement wherein Tyler Technologies Inc. will provide the city with a software and related products and services that will accommodate the city's current data processing needs.
Need a second?
Agree.
Good evening. We've been about two and a half years getting to this point. Audra mentioned earlier that she said we should think we should have Kate. So, but, as you all know, this is the software that we are proposing to replace our current system, which is our Sun Guard, formerly known as HTE system. It was implemented back in 1995. It's served the city well for 21 years and so, we have reached a point where we're ready to move on to, the system doesn't meet the city's needs. Couple of years ago, to help us through the ERP selection process, we hired a consulting firm called Plant Moran. They, that contract, we entered into that contract in September of 2014. Their role was to do four things. Conduct a needs assessment, preparation of the request for proposals document, the proposal evaluation and vendor selection, and the creation of the statement of work and contract negotiations. The needs assessment, that piece was, we met along with Plant Moran's staff, met with each department to identify the existing system usage and how HTE was being utilized. And then also, more importantly, to evaluate what shadow systems were being used. And a shadow system is just an industry buzzword for capturing information in other ways, like Excel spreadsheets or other databases or paper forms, that type of thing. And then also to identify the future requirements such as online payments, citizen self-service, and a hosted environment. This is software as a service that you mentioned earlier is a hosted environment. That means we're going to buy that service from another company. Our stuff, our information and service is going to reside on their servers. The preparation of the RFP document was based on this needs assessment and the RFP was advertised March 29th, 2015, and we set a deadline for May 11th. We then began the evaluation of the proposals and the vendor selection. We had four vendor responses. One was Tyler Technologies, of course. Sun Guard also proposed, a company called CRW, and another company called SAP. During the evaluation of the proposals, we rather quickly eliminated the SAP proposal because of the cost and the, it was built more for the New Yorks and the Chickagos of the world, not for Paducah, didn't meet our needs. Another interesting thing while we were in the middle of the evaluation was Sun Guard purchased CRW. So, we had two vendors and one purchased the other one. So, that was kind of a unique situation that we've never been in. So, we had then essentially boiled down to two choices, Tyler and the Sun Guard CRW proposal. The next step was we brought both Tyler and Sun Guard in to do vendor demonstrations. Each city department sent staff for the demos and it came pretty apparent that Tyler was the number one choice of city staff. We also conducted phone interviews with a number of cities currently running Tyler and Sun Guard as well. The positive experiences were more prevalent with the Tyler group, so that kind of drove us more towards Tyler. Another interesting common theme, I think we heard from pretty much every city, is do not underestimate the amount of time this project will take. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. The other piece of the puzzle was the initial proposals, none of the initial proposals included property tax. And that was going to be a problem for us because we were going to have to run a separate Sun Guard or some other system that we currently have now. We have property tax now, but their new proposals did not include, none of them included property tax. Until Tyler came back and said, "We didn't include that in the proposal because we don't have a current city in Kentucky that collects property taxes." So, instead, they modified some of their existing other states models and then later proposed the property tax module for us. Having that piece then kind of completed the whole package. We had all of it, you know, all of the financials, the property tax and all of the community stuff. The, we did attend, or made a site visit to Rome, Georgia for, they are a current Tyler customer and gained a wealth of knowledge from that visit. And staff also attended this year in May, the Tyler Technologies Annual Conference. Having said that, I think, you know, we've done a considerable amount of work in making the selection. We then went into the contract negotiations between the city and Tyler with the aid of Plant Moran helping us through that process. Legal review was done by Mr. Tom Coiler and the Tyler attorneys with specific attention to matters regarding network security and those types of things in a hosted system. Should the commission approve the contract, the implementation will be divided into six phases, which they estimate will last over about 45 months. Yes, 45 months, so approximately four years. Phase one being the accounting, general ledger, budget, purchasing. Phase two, also financials, including citizen self-service. Phase three will be permits, code enforcement, the community, the fire prevention side. Property tax billing will be phase four. And then phase five will be the human resources side of things. And then phase six will round it out with work orders, fleet management, and facilities. The costs for this, for the Tyler Technologies includes, is broken into three things. The one-time fees, which include the business process review, data conversion, implementation, and training is $785,740. The travel expenses are estimated at $155,540. And the recurring annual fees for the term of the seven-year contract of the agreement total, $1,744,798. So, that's the fees for the entire seven-year contract, approximately $250,000 a year. That's the gist of it. Probably say more than I normally say, but...
Well, I mean, that just goes with the territory, doesn't it? And you explain it very well and thank you because it does make it easy to understand. And do you all have any questions for Greg? Any comments? I mean, it's going to make it a lot more customer-friendly and it's going to make, yeah, it's in our budget, going to make everything a lot more efficient.
Regarding the budget, we have budgeted for a couple, three years now and will continue for the next two or three years from the absent payroll, the investment fund, which, as you recall... fund, uh, which, um, as you recall from budget sessions, has and will continue to obligate, um, a fair amount of the discretionary funds that we have available for projects from year to year from the investment fund.
Thank you, Greg. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Revising Chapter Forty-two, Article Two, Nuisance Code Enforcement of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance can be summarized as follows, this ordinance revises and amends Chapter Forty-two, Article Two, which article is known as the Nuisance Code Enforcement Ordinance, to define demolition by neglect, allow the city to determine demolition by neglect, to provide notice provisions to the alleged violator, to allow the city to refer such matters to the county attorney for prosecution, and allow penalties for same. Further, Section Forty-two through forty-four lends fines, charges, abatement costs, fees, penalties, attorney's fees, and costs provides penalties for whoever violates any provision of this ordinance and is hereby amended and restated as follows, the city shall possess a lien on the property finally determined to be in violation of the Nuisance Code for all fines assessed for the violation and for all charges, costs, penalties, abatement costs, and fees, including without limitation attorney's fees and a twenty-five-dollar administration fee incurred by the city in connection with the enforcement of the Nuisance Code. The lien shall bear interest at the rate of four percent per annum until paid. A notice of the lien may be recorded in the office of the county clerk pursuant to KRS eighty-two point seven-two-zero, the lien shall be superior to and have priority over all other liens at the property, except state, county, school board, and city taxes, and may be enforced by judicial proceedings. In addition to the remedy prescribed in subj, subsection A, the owner or owners of the property at the time the violation occurred shall be personally liable for the amount of all fines assessed for the violation and for all charges, costs, penalties, abatement costs, and fees, including without limitation attorney's fees and a twenty-five-dollar administration fee incurred by the city in connection with the enforcement of the Nuisance Code. Therefore said amount shall bear interest at the rate of four percent per annum until paid. The city may bring a civil action against the responsible owner or owners and shall have the same remedies as provided for the recovery of a debt. The city shall be entitled to recover from the responsible owner or owners all attorney fees and other costs incurred by the city by reason of the collection upon and enforcement of the responsible owner's or owner's liability hereunder in the lien which secures the same. Upon payment determination of the Nuisance Code Enforcement Board or Court Order, the city shall be authorized to release any lien filed hereunder and recorded in the office of the county clerk. The presu, provisions of this article shall be enforced in the same manner as any other violations of this code. Any person violating any of the provisions of this article shall be deemed guilty of a Class B misdemeanor, and upon conviction thereof shall receive a fine not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or a jail sentence not to exceed ninety days for each offense. Each day that such violation continues shall constitute a separate offense. This article and the foregoing penalties shall not be construed to limit or deny the right of the city or any person to such equitable legal remedies as may be available by law.
Second?
Good evening again, Mayor Commissioners. Um, and the proposal that you had before you, not, uh, uh, kind of does speak for itself, but the bottom line is derelict properties, and giving us an opportunity or a venue in which we can, um, take action and prevent people from just walking away from it. As you know, we've had some of that in our history, where we've experienced a couple of things, and this is an attempt to try to clean that up and give us an opportunity to prevent that from happening.
So, it'll basically put more teeth in the ordinance?
Yes.
That's good.
Did you model it after another city, another city, maybe?
We initially were thinking about bringing it after another city, but we list, list, looked at the existing codes we had on the books and made a decision that we could amend the existing Nuisance Code and try to accomplish the same type of thing, and that is the demolition by neglect portion of it.
Well, some of those in the past have kind of been protected because they were like an LLC or LLP. Would this help eliminate that protection that they would have had from that?
We believe this gives us an opportunity to challenge that.
The interest rate we're charging was listed at four percent. Was there, was there any thought given to maybe where it would be variable? I mean, four percent sounds okay now, but I can remember a time when four percent would have been darn cheap when the, when the prime rate was at eighteen. Just a thought.
It is, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know anything about the four percent or where that number comes from, right off the top of my head, right here, right now. Be happy to look that up, though.
You don't want to? You want to?
Well, I think you could have it float to some point above, above prime rate. I mean, it's just a disincentive to the, to the landowner, just it's way just to push them along.
Uh, my experience with that, and I, I understand where you're coming from, um, variable would require an ordinance change, I think, anytime we decided, we could base it off prime or some, um, plus or minus from prime. I've seen that done before.
It's no big deal.
I think the idea here is to, um, you know, provide additional disincentive by having an interest expense on, on top of it. It's not necessarily cost recovery for us, uh, here as a gentleman, like it might be in some other cases.
The purpose of this...
Right.
Yeah, it's just a hammer.
Yeah.
I just make sure the hammer's big enough. All right. Any other questions?
Okay, uh, before we go to the city manager's report, I just want to, um, call, is it Lacy? Lacy? Okay, Price, and Keith Woodup, I'd just like to introduce them to the commission. And, Lacy, you've been, um, a city commissioner for how many years in your community?
Twenty-eight years.
So, uh, we met with them this afternoon, and they're, uh, here with AECOM. So, uh, Lacy, this is your second time to be back in the community?
This is my second time, uh, mayor and city council. Uh, I was here about a month and a half ago for my first visit, and let me just say that this is a jewel of a community. And mayor, I must say that I did some checking. I, I, I shopped at, uh, more stores than my husband would have wanted me to, and took some things back to South Carolina. I'm from Aiken, uh, South Carolina, and I served on Aiken City Council, and, uh, as I went around from store to store and business to business, uh, I did some asking about Paducah and, uh, the city structure and this, and you, mayor, as well, and heard a lot of outstanding things about you, the management of this town. I had a great tour with Tracy, she took me around and showed me many things with this community, and I envy you with your, with your water, your riverfront, it, it is a jewel of a community, and, uh, I'm back, and this will not be my last time here, I'll be back again and again. Uh, but you have so many things, the quilt, there's, there's so many attractive things you're doing here, events that you're doing, and I don't want to come back the next time alone, but bring my family with me, so, uh...
Right.
You'll see more than you will want to see me probably in this town.
And I told them they need to eat at the Fried House tonight.
And this is my part.
We plan on doing so, and I'll be very brief, and, and I'm not an elected official from Aiken, but I do as I did in Aiken. Uh, I'm here on behalf of AECOM, which is a large Fortune Five Hundred company, uh, based in California. However, our DOE nuclear work is based in the deep south, and we're at about every DOE site in the complex, and we have a keen interest in the potential work here. Uh, so, we're on exploratory mission, uh, trying to understand the, the wants, the needs of this community to be able to take that back and factor into some of the decisions that we're going to be making here, uh, as we look, uh, forward to the RFP being, uh, issued here. So, thank you for welcoming us this, this evening, and, uh, look forward to speaking with you individually. Thank you.
All right, and enjoy your meal.
All right, thank you.
City Manager's Report?
Just ask for a brief executive session under, uh, personnel, please.
Okay, um, any commission comments tonight? I would just like to, uh, talk about a project that is, that I have been working on since February, and we will be having a press release on this later in the week, and it's, uh, a project that will involve, uh, experienced local artist, um, local-based artists that will be juried and selected for this project. Char Downs is the project lead artist, and she's a resident of the Lower Town Arts District, and her husband Jay is also, um, the project manager for this, so, we will be having a press release on this later in the week. Do we have any public comments? Okay, who has the executive session?
I do, ma'am.
Thank you.
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics, it, issues which might lead to the appointment, dismissal, or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS six-one-point-eight-one-zero-one-F.
Second? City Clerk?
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor, I think I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just... Mr. Wilson's listening? City Manager?
Will he be coming back?
No.
Okay, all right, we will not be coming back, so meetings adjourned.